City, Manassas City Council meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmembers Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments and agenda-related items, anyone who'd like to comment tonight's agenda? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Gary Vitaleski, 159 Quincy Street. I want to comment on the appointment of a person for the vacant council seat. I think that's, this should be a no-brainer. I mean, Manassas City Council needs new blood on it, it needs new ideas. We are in a drastic financial situation here, and it's going to get worse. It's not going to get better. So if we can get someone on the door sooner than later, I think it's well worth it. I think it has not gone unnoticed that there has been so much of a conflict on the city council. We've seen it on the selection of the mayor, the mayor pro town, the city budget, the city DDA budget, where it hasn't missed footfall constantly. And as time that this city moves forward, change is required. So I would support drastically the appointment, thank you.
Anyone else like to comment tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items are marked with an asterisk around the consent agenda, considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the remainder portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, and notification regarding next work session.
How big motion we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Have a motion by councilmember Goodspeed, supported by councilmember Whitlow, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? See now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of change in the date of the September work session. At the November 10th, 2015 organizational meeting, council took action to set the meeting calendar for 2016. At that time, the September work session was scheduled for a Monday to accommodate any council members and staff that might be attending the annual MML convention. No council member or staff has signed up to attend this year's MML convention. Council could take action to return the September work session to its normal date of Tuesday, September 13th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Have a motion by councilmember Zalinski, supported by councilmember Goodspeed, to reschedule the September work sessions. Is there any discussion? See now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved, ma'am.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution creating tobacco-free outdoor recreation areas in city parks. The Great Start Collaborative for Manassas County and Manassas County Live While Coalition approached the Parks Commission with a proposal to install signage at several children's play areas within our parks to reduce tobacco use. The Parks Commission recommends approval of this request. The signs will be provided to the city, and they will be installed by the DPW at each location. Cost will be minimal. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion by councilmember Zalinski, supported by councilmember Smith, to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm just curious where, which parks are going to be, have the signs posted? It's not going to be every park, is it?
They're listed, yeah.
I think, the children's play areas. I can take the question. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Patty Baruki from the Great Start Collaborative. In the documents that were given to the city, there is a list of the city parks that will be included. There are 10 parks overall. If you'd like, I can list them.
Yeah, sure, okay.
They will be only parks with child play areas. Douglas Park would include Rotary Park, First Street Beach Play Area, Rocket Park, Lighthouse Park, Fifth Avenue Beach Play Area, Reese Park, Met Park, Sands Park, Duffy Park, and Morton Park. These were confirmed to have child play areas through Rob Carson.
Does that take into consideration the old Rocket Park?
It does.
Okay, alright.
The placement of those would be collaboration between the DPW and Great Start Collaborative.
Why, no, new Rocket Park and then the old one, so.
Correct. And the names of those parks were taken the best that we could based on history.
Alright.
And what they've been named at different times.
I'll commend you for this. It's needed and it's pretty good.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is a question or a proposal, I guess. I'm looking at the proposal. Are you hoping eventually to have an ordinance adopted that will be enforceable?
In the initial conversations with city officials, it was proposed as a resolution. Should the city wish to take on an ordinance, we do have language and documents that could help that along if that was a choice of the city.
I see.
At this point, it's being proposed as a resolution.
Has the park in Stronach taken that step?
The park in Stronach is at a resolution, I just want to double check with the person who made that happen. So, yes, resolution only in Stronach.
Alright, thank you. Are there any parks with ordinances for any cities that you know that have an ordinance?
Oh, there definitely are, especially on the west side of Michigan. I did a little, quite a bit of research, actually. There's also a list within your packet of other communities that have chosen to go with a resolution or an ordinance. Cadillac is the most recent one that I am aware of, and they chose to go with an ordinance. And the district health department, which is also represented here today, helped them with that language to move that forward. So that's always an option. And we're hoping that this carries some momentum to other townships in our area and just creating that healthy environment that we're all wanting for our community.
Thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
I think you did a good presentation at the Parks Commission, and I appreciate the thought and the detail that's gone into this. Also, the fact that it's not going to be real heavy-handed, hopeful, people will educate and adopt their behavior, I trust children, so I also thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely, we're trying to address the behavior as well as the tobacco products. So there's been a lot of thought and a lot of time that's gone into this, so I can comment later as to people that have helped. One thing I can mention really quick, this is also in your documents, but this is approximately the size of the sign. This is 11 by 17. The sign will actually be 12 by 18. And it will be fully funded by a grant through the district health department, 10 kind funding for chronic, prevention of chronic diseases. So there's many people involved in this initiative, and we appreciate being considered and approved tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Thank you. Consideration of awarding a contract to Pavement Maintenance Systems LLC to complete micro-surface paving. The city Manassas Transportation Improvement Plan includes approximately six miles of light rehabilitation on major streets. The project was publicly bid with two bids being received. First bid, Pavement Maintenance System LLC with a bid of $453,570.56, and Strausser Construction Incorporated with a bid of $515,333.76. Pavement Manassas is a recommended bid. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the contract. At this time, council will take action to award the contract.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Have a motion by councilmember Whitlow, supported by councilmember Goodspeed, to award the, to the low bidder, Pavement Maintenance Systems LLC. Is there any discussion?
I would like to know generally where, when this is going to start. Jeff, could you tell us a little bit about the contract, the area's concern, and timeframe, please?
When the engineers were designing and specifying the project, they came in contact with several of the companies that perform this. It's a fairly specialized process, and just through their conversations learned that they had already been booked up for the rest of these of 2016. So we decided to bid this out with two different options. One, with a completion this summer or this fall and October, and the second option was for a spring completion of 2017 by the first of June. We had two bidders. Both bidders did not submit a price to complete in 2016. Both of them submitted a price to complete in 2017. So what's before you right now is to approve that contract to be completed by June 1st of 2017. Depending on if they have, something opens up in their schedule, they're more than willing to come and at least do some of the prep work and possibly get it done this year if it worsens their schedule, but I wouldn't anticipate it would be until next spring.
Jeff, have they done any work, have they done work for us before?
They have not done work in the city of Manassas before.
Are they doing any work around the area of Cadillac, or Lottie, or anything like that?
Well, he's coming up here, I can tell you that we checked their local references, and Spicer checked with the communities where they have done this work, and most of them have done, they've done work for those communities for an extended period of time, and they were extremely satisfied with the work.
Yeah, Bryce, and I'll just kind of repeat that. He, when we, when this contract came on board, we had not worked with them either. So we checked on references, and they sent four or five communities around the state, all in Michigan, and we contacted all of them, heard back from all but one. And all of them were real happy with the contract and real happy with the product. Because we're kind of checking on the product too as well, in terms of how those projects came out. So I think that was in my rec letter, but we, I don't know off the top of my head those communities, I could look it up and get it to you, but they're all Michigan, they're communities similar in size to Manassas County as well.
And the next question is on cherry, we're going to be micro-surfacing cherry?
A portion of it.
A portion. What are we going to do by the crosswalks? We're not carrying those, I'd rather.
Those are, no, those are not, the crosswalks are not included in the contract, so this micro-surface would go up to the crosswalk and then skip the concrete and continue here.
Alright. Thank you. Thanks.
I have a question about the bidding process. We received two bids, how many bids do you send out or does it just go on the internet and companies pick it up? How does that work?
So we researched to try and find as many as we could. There's only in Michigan a handful, probably three that were in Michigan-based, and there's a few in Ohio. Very specialized, you know, normally when we probably put a bid package out, we talk to 10 to 20 different contractors. And here, we had three or four, and two, and only two said they're going to probably bid it. The other one said they're not even going to bother because of the workload. They do a lot of county work, there's some highway, MDOT work, there's a lot of contracts just roulette for MDOT. And so they can, they fill up real quick, and so we tried to maximize our potential for bidders, but I think we got about as many as we were going to get.
Yeah, with the asset management program that's really taken off by a lot of the communities in Michigan, this is one of those newer tech, I shouldn't say newer technique, this technique's probably been along for 20 years that I've seen, but it's now becoming a very prominent part of people's asset management programs. So the number of contractors hasn't caught up to the demand, and the demand is starting to increase substantially.
So any projects we have in the future, quickly, we better be cheaper than we'll be?
Yeah, to be honest with you, it's tough because our fiscal year starts on July 1st. So we've had some internal conversations about, and maybe we need to have future discussions with council about whether or not you'd be comfortable after the budget's adopted allowing us to bid it before the start of the fiscal year but not award it until after July 1st. Because the deeper you get into the construction season, the more difficult it is to find contractors that still have time in their schedules and are able to submit competitively. The pricing, we're very happy with because it's right on our budget projections, but again, it's for next season, so.
I think I heard the city engineer say that it's all about they're too busy, that's why they're not bidding, is that right?
Yes, yeah, that's why they weren't bidding this year. The two contractors, they're already sort of set to place for 2017. So they were happy to bid a 2017 project, but they weren't willing to bid a 2016 project. Really hear the same thing from other normal paving contractors, you know, Elmer's, Ruth Riley, they're all, everybody's swamped right now. It's tricky getting a project out in the middle of summer. If we could bid it January, February, every year, that'd be my preference, but it's a timing issue. Thank you.
Any other questions? See now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution adopting the city Manassas master plan. The planning commission has been working on developing a new master plan since 2013. The commission issued public input from a visioning session, an online survey, and a charter to develop the plan. On May 18th, 2016, the plan was released for the 63-day review and comment period, and a public hearing was noticed. The public commission has held a public hearing on August 4th, 2016, where they adopted the plan and are recommending final approval of the same by the city council. Is there a motion to take action?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion by councilmember Zalinski, supported by councilmember Beaton, to approve the city master plan. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to thank Denise and the planning commission, they worked really hard, attended a few of the meetings. Denise is the rock, she put this together, pretty much. She worked really hard, and it's very much appreciated.
Also want to thank Denise and Rob Carson and the rest of the planning commission for their hard work over the past three years. It's very time-consuming, just did a great job.
Any other discussion?
Agree.
See now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of local revenue sharing board grant application. The local revenue sharing board distributes 2% money from the Little River Casino. The deadline for the 2016 Cycle 2 application is Friday, September 2nd at 5:00 PM. The grant application package was received on August 8th. That did not allow sufficient time for staff to complete the grant applications for inclusion in council's August 16th agenda packet for consideration. Staff will be available to provide verbal presentations at the meeting. Councils being asked to provide their authorization based upon the verbal reports.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Good evening. Always say if you have two grants you'd like to submit. The first one is a $4,000 grant for tuition to send Detective Glass to Staff and Command School. For the first time ever, Staff and Command will be pre-dated in Manassas County by the Northwestern Traffic Institute. $4,000 is the tuition. We sent all our supervisors to that school, and Josh is the newest supervisor who's not in. To send him out of town, it's a 10-week program, and we pay motel's mileage and meals, so it's a significant savings to our department. I have that hope here, but I'd like to submit a grant for that. The other grant we have is the fire department. We have a very robust education program for students, K through 6th grade. Part of that is we teach medical fires out, we talk about evacuation, plan, that kind of stuff. We'd like to build a trailer for about $16,000 that would be a mobile classroom, and the way it's set up, it's a bedroom. The kids would go in the bedroom by themselves, it's monitored from the outside with a firefighter on the inside, there's a camera on the inside, and we teach the children how to recognize a fire in your room, how to, you have a plan to evacuate, make sure the door is not hot, use a window, use a phone call. We believe it would be a very nice level change in our educational program. We have had children who have been saved from fires, structured fires, who have credited the education program for saving their life in a fire. We just would just take that to a new level, and we think it's a nice addition to our education program. Thank you.
Any questions?
Those are the two grants.
And I know they're safety-related, but is there one that we can submit for other? You never know when there might be extra money, like the unusual that happened last time, so just in case there's other extra, we have a grant submitted?
Nothing that doesn't require a little bit more research and putting together the package. We have some ideas out there.
Like Morton Park?
That's another project. But we have one for surveillance and security equipment, but it hasn't had the time, chance to further research that, so we're looking at that for the next cycle.
Alright.
Do these grants come up on a recurring basis, same time every year? Twice a year. And I think what happened this year was our first meeting in September was, it didn't fit into the normal cycle, and that wasn't picked up at accounting because they figured it and stuff up. Because normally, we get them in advance, but this time we didn't. But normally, they're out about this time, but then we have, you know, they have to give us the forms and different things like that.
Any other questions? Can you please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration Manassas Township Water Service Agreement. The city and township staff, with assistance of their respective attorneys, have reached consensus on revised water service agreement. This revised agreement differs slightly from the one approved by city council in September 2, 2015, and again in May 2016. However, the changes do not materially affect the intent of the previous agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve the revised water service agreement.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion by councilmember Zalinski, supported by councilmember Whitlow, to approve the revised water service agreement. Is there any discussion?
Just want to thank staff for being diligent and Manassas Township also getting this project done. It's going to mean a lot, a lot for growth in our county, so thank you.
Any other discussion? See now, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of an appointment to fill the vacant seventh district council seat. Section 2-6 of the city charter states, any vacancy occurring in the office council person shall be filled within 30 days by appointment of a resident of the district. No vacancy need be filled if occurs within 120 days preceding a city election. By council, is therefore not required by charter to fill the vacancy this close to the election. Councilmember Smith has requested that council consider electing, appointing Aaron Pimeyak, the only current candidate to the seventh district council seat. This appointment would only be temporary, pending results of the number eight, 2016 election. It must be noted that writing candidates are still possible and must be registered with the clerk's office two weeks prior to the election. Historically, council has filed a practice of advertising and interviewing candidates for a council vacancy. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we consider an appointment to the seventh district council seat.
Second.
Have a motion by councilmember Beaton, supported by councilmember Whitlow, to consider the appointment of the seventh district council seat. Is there any discussion?
I would agree that historically, in by city charter, when you have a vacancy of this nature, it would be advertised and even solicit candidates and interview the candidates and make an appointment. In this situation, the filing period to be on the ballot has passed the 2nd of August, and even those of us that have no opponent could still face a running candidate for the upcoming election. But I just think the city is better served with a separate member of council and not going for an extended period of time with a vacancy.
Well, I disagree. I think that, to be fair to all our citizens, to have an opportunity in that seventh district, that we should have advertised that vacancy if we were going to fill it. There's nothing against Ms. Pimeyak, but past practices indicated that we had the position, offered the position, advertised for it. I think that's what we should do in being so close to an election. I don't think it's the chairman council at this point.
I disagree. I think it's an opportunity to get her on board if she's the only one running. It's an opportunity for the public to get to know her a little bit, and it's a nice, it would be the appropriate thing to do.
Again, we're talking about two different, this is an appointment by council for a very short period of time, which could have gotten more people interested if it was a shorter period of time versus what is being voted on by the city. I think we're talking two different things, and I think if we're going to do one, if we're going to fill it by appointment by council, we need to be consistent.
So if we advertise now, we could have it first, September 1st. Well, when I was put on after Iowa Hayden left, you know, that it was advertised, and we got a petition signed, and then it was me and against one other gentleman, and the council appointed me for that year. If we're going to do this, I don't want to problem doing it, but I think, to be fair, while you're asked this way, this way, until September 1st, that gets the time for somebody else to advertise it, have it put on the ballot, or have it put, so if there's anybody else. I'm not opposed to, is it you?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm not opposed to it. But I think we should keep past practices and at least advertise it.
Any other discussion?
I'm not in favor of advertising, and we've got a filed eligible candidate for the position. I would support Councilwoman Beaton's comment. It'd be an opportunity for the city and the council to get familiar with the only filed candidate. And I understand there's potential for writing candidates, but they won't be on the ballot. Being on the ballot is a decided advantage. I would find it hard to believe that she would lose the election. I think now's as good a time as any. Move forward, fill the vacancy.
Any other discussion?
Where, where is, has this been run by George? Did he make any comments? Well, the only comment he made was previously that the council does not hand the position by charter, other than the yes and please. Okay. And any feelings from staff on this? Like, you know, my only concern, and Councilmember Smith and I talked about it, and we talked, I had not thought of a possibility of writing and just hand so. My only concern would be putting someone in the position, and that might preclude somebody from coming in as a white guy. That's my only concern. There's a lot positives with it, but that's my only concern.
Any other questions?
Historically, I'm going back quite a few years, I've been attending a lot of council meetings. I have never known that seat to be challenged. I find it exciting that there is a person who would actually go out and get a petition signed, didn't pay $100, to be on the ballot, and without got petition signed, it's exciting about being on the council. I know nobody else that's showed any interest. I do understand the setting, or the past practice, I've seen that done. I just don't have an issue with it. A person's going to, if they want to write it in, they're going to write in, no matter whether she's on or she's not, and someone will prevail at the end. That's just the way it is.
Any other discussion?
If, if there was another candidate, they, they would have, in my opinion anyway, surfaced already for, for that seat. It's nice to have somebody showing great interest in the city and help us out, and so, and I know you're, we're on a slippery slope of knowing one thing or another, but another, another candidate could have, but they chose not to.
Well, I think we're talking about two different things. We're talking about filling a very short-term position, which there might be more than one interested candidate versus what's going on the ballot for a two-year. Two completely different scenarios, which may, or may not generate more interest. All I'm saying is that we, I feel we need to follow past practice. We didn't advertise that we were looking for a short-term fill.
I had a conversation with Mr. Gustad, and he was enthusiastic that Aaron decided to pursue being on council. He didn't seem to appear to have any objections to that, like anybody does.
Nobody has any against Ms. Pinyet from applying. It's not an issue about her, it's about the process that we're taking. And if we advertise, we go forward and advertise, and she's the only one, fine, but if there's multiple, I think we need to follow our past practice and give the opportunity for the residents in District 7, even if it's a short period of time. Somebody may have that interest just to test out the one. Is there any other discussion? Signum, will you please take your role?
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
No.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a resolution for participation in regional resource recovery project. The Alliance for Economic Success and Iris, Iris Waste Division Specialties received a $30,000 grant from USDA Rural Development for a multi-durational project to develop a sustainable regional resource recovery program. They are asking the city to participate, and if willing to do so, to adopt the attached resolution. The city's commitment for staff time only, and the city can withdraw from the project at any time. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Zalinski, supported by councilmember Smith, to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion?
Is there someone here that could speak about this from here? Mr. Marshall?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, as, as I read through the literature on this, it appears it's, it's a, a grant to study a collaborative recycling center, regional center?
Well, yes, a recovery system, whether it could develop into a transfer, which would be economic development in this county, or even a recyclable center, but for right now it's just data-driven, and it'll be regionally with Wexford County, Mason County, Grand Dravers County, Bensy County, and Manistee County. So it's quite a large area, and Sarah Archer would be the executive director, basically the contractor for this program. AES will be only the fiduciary, and Sarah Archer will do most of the work. She's not here right, right now because she's in Bear Lake giving a presentation on the state process here. And it's just a matter of contacting all the people to get everyone on board first. I think what's important to understand is that the governor last year allocated $1 million toward recycling. The city, or the state of, or the state of Michigan is in the top lower five, the low five of recycling in the United States. So we feel that recycling will be important no matter which governor comes aboard moving forward. So it's really important to get this data-driven before we can even figure out what is the best process. It's no cost to the city, there is some data-driven that would be basically just administrative information that will have to be given.
Okay, and the county's contributing $5,000?
The county contributed $5,000, and the AES, or the grant that was written by the AES was for $30,000, yes.
Mr. Marshall, I might have said it, I missed it. Is there a time limit? I mean, I think you'd have a timeline of your, something completed?
The project time I've got right here is 12 to 16 months. Right now, we're securing all the participants from now through October, and then establishing a leadership team, and then November, December, meetings of the leadership team, and meetings of, from the stakeholders, and then November through February of next year, this data-driven analysis and determination, recycling rate, and, and then a full process, all the 16 months. Because before you can really figure out what's the best process, we have to get the data regionally first.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Head in. Thank you.
Any other questions? Signum, will you please take your role?
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communication, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight we'll hear from Mr. Sean Milton, who report on activities of this vice group.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Here to report on engineering record for, I guess this will be my third, third round of doing this presentation. I guess my, my thought tonight is I wanted to really quickly just talk about our office. We're continuing to grow and our staffing briefly, and then spend most of my time really just going through projects we did, we've been working on from August of last year to August of this year. And so just give you a kind of fly-through, a little highlight on each of the projects. If you want to ask questions during, anytime during, stop me, we can talk about it, or we can wait till the end and have, you know, big questions and discussion. So I'm really going to kind of focus on the projects for the most part. There's been a lot of things happening in the last year. And then at the end, I just want to hit some priorities, you know, as the engineer of record going forward for this coming up year. Briefly in our office, we're at 302 River Street, and we're packed in there right now. We have more, more people who we really have places to sit. So we're looking at talking to our landlord about getting some space to the west of us that's vacant, and trying to fill some of that, that area up. And so hopefully that'll happen soon because it's a little crowded. Staffing-wise, I think everybody knows Pat Bentley. He's a professional surveyor, he's got over 20 years' experience. He's been working for the city for many years, with a previous engineer of record in with our firm, and he's a registered professional surveyor. Wendy Carey, she's our part-time project assistant. She's actually retired, partially retired, and she works with us in the summer and then heads south in the winter. And so we just recently made an offer and accepted by Heidi Loper to be another part-time project assistant in our company, and she will be starting next week and will help us to kind of fill the gaps in the summer so we have somebody in the office 40 hours a week, plus we're actually in the phone 40 hours a week, and really get us in the busy periods to full-time status at the front desk. And then in the winter, Heidi will assist with, upon a part-time basis, with looking at our office. Shane Brennan is a full-time civil CAD tech. He actually lives up close to Traverse City, but he works a couple day, he'll be working a couple days a week out of Manistee. Lucas and Jared are both summer interns, we've had here all summer. Those, those are the guys that have been in the van doing the work, scanning all summer long, a couple of great local engineers and surveyors, and they'll be missed. They'll be heading back to school next week, I guess both of them. Woody Beardsley, he's our, what we call an RPR, he's the inspector, our onsite representative for the river sewer project at 6th Avenue. So he's the guy out there most of the time onsite, doing inspectors reports, photographing, documenting, material testing, et cetera. And then myself, I'm a registered professional engineer, and I've been working in this field for about 25 years. So project-wise, Riverbank Sewer, probably the most visible that's going on right now. Just roughly, I would say we're about halfway through this project right now. We've installed, directionally drilled under the river, there's 900-foot pipe we drilled under the river, that's the force main for the new pump station. That's been connected on the south side to the interceptor. On the north side, the piping for all of that is probably going to happen in the next week or two to connect it to the pump station. So we'll be getting close to having all the plumbing in to, from the new pump station to, to start working. The electrical controls and things like that still need to be brought in. To the east of there, we've installed the outside sheet, steel sheeting wall. That is the first part of the sheeting wall. It's actually, they've installed that, Swodorski Brothers has been backfilling with sand to provide access back there. One of the next things you'll see is, probably later this week or next week, is an excavator will be in there driving another row of sheeting that is called the tieback wall, and that will literally be used to tie back, to be tie rods between the front wall and the back wall, and that's the complete system for the sheet wall. After that wall goes in, then the old sewer will be removed, a new one will be placed along near a plastic pipe, and we'll be on our way to having the interceptor replaced, well-protected, and sand backfilling behind the sheet wall, as opposed to how it was just a couple of years ago, exposed to the elements. Right now, final completion's looking around October of 2016. This is just a rendering, and, and that's all it is, is a rendering, but it gives you a little bit of an idea where it's kind of headed. There'll be, you know, kind of a flat surface along that far east side, where, and that is where the sanitary interceptor will be embedded. Just a couple photos, the upper left, filling behind the wall, sand backfill. The right is the actual drill rig that was used to push rods into the river, and then to pull the pipe back, if, if you didn't get a chance to see that. Lower left is the actual physical connection of that force main to the interceptor on the south side, at Spruce Road, Spruce Street. There is a, the middle picture on the bottom's an air relief valve on the south side in Spruce Street, and then the one on the lower right, it's hard to see because it's 35 feet deep, is the pump station itself, and that is, that's, those are the pipes coming up from the pumps that went over to a valve valve. Some other projects we did last year, we finished the sweetened pump station, that was an upgrade, new pumps, new valve valve, new meter pit, new controls at the station, and telemetry so it can communicate with this, back to the treatment plant. Also completed last year was the industrial pump station, and that project had a lot of electrical upgrades. There's a new generator, three-phase power was brought in, there's a new meter pit and a new control panel all installed last year. The waste water treatment plant, return activated sludge or RAS pumps, we bid this project about the time we were getting, working with the DAQ on our permit, and we were unpleasantly surprised that they asked for a larger pump than the larger pump we were proposing. And so that's going to require a small change on the project and us to order pumps that will push us probably in the fall and winter. So we were real excited about it, but we have, we've got the pumps identified, they will be coming by this fall, and Swodorski Brothers, who's the contractor on this one, will probably ideally put them in fall, winter. And then that will be the last project on the bond. That will probably turn out to be the last project on the bond proposal, if the Riverbank Sewer is done, you know, this fall. We did a small study on Arthur Street, Gerumbo, that whole system of pumps on that side. We found in that basically, in Arthur Street, it could use, it needs the generator that was previously recommended, there is, one of the pumps should be repaired or replaced. And then we also looked at Gerumbo Pump Station for odors, because there's been complaints there at that location, and we've identified that we could, there's some things we can do on a short-term, kind of low-cost basis, or in a longer-term planning basis for odor. But when, but the hospital just disconnected with the Manistee Township system, that force main, the long force main, contributed to a lot of the hydrogen sulfide, which is causes the odors, and so we're going to check on it now and make sure there still is an issue, but we will be making some recommendations and following through on some for that odor control there. The SAW grant, we've talked plenty about that. The things we've done in the last year really has been collecting, inventorying, and doing condition assessments, so I'm going to just focus on that a little bit. We've talked about mobile mapping that we view, we did this two years ago. We have all this data at our fingertips, so in the last year, we were going in, if you look at the front of this picture, you can see manhole covers, and this picture again, I think I've said it before, is data. It's a bunch of dots that represent X, Y, and Z points from a laser that shot them, and it has color overlayed on it, so if you zoomed in, you see a bunch of dots. This isn't really a photo. But what we do is we go into that manhole, we pick it, we get the X, Y, Z information, and we extract it to GIS. So we basically, methodically went through the entire city of Manistee and picked every single manhole and every single catch basin to get the exact location of them. And also did that with water valves and hydrants, et cetera. What we found when we extracted that data, and I apologize on my context, and so I'm going to have to, we had about 900-plus manholes, 600-plus storm, storm manholes, and about 1,400 catch basins. So there's about 300 features we had found and extracted just on the storm and sanitary sewer side. And once we had that data in GIS, the other thing we did this summer, I mentioned with our co-op, or with our interns, is we scanned all the manholes. We literally went to every storm and sanitary manhole and put our scanner down it to get, to collect data, and I'll talk briefly about that in the next slide. And once we had that information, it allows us to do what we call coding, the condition. It's a standard practice, and then we can now identify if it's in good, bad, fair condition, and start to really show, show you what your system's condition is as of now. This is the unit we had used this summer, that blue puck on the right-hand picture there is the cameras, got one on the bottom and the top, and it simply is lowered down into the manhole, slowly extracted, the whole time is taking photos, and it stitches together a three-dimensional object of the manhole. And we have, now we now have at our fingertips all that, that information. What's valuable about that is, and these are just how the data's kind of used, the right size, a three-dimensional view, which I'm not going to take the time to show you now, but you can literally fly around inside the manhole and look at the picture. The left picture is what we call an unfolded view, so we can get elevations and pipe sizes. But what's important is we get the directions, the inverts, material, manhole dimensions, and we get the condition from this. So in the, in our offices, we're getting the condition of every manhole in the system, and we're about, probably about 70% between storm and sanitary with doing a condition assessment of the manhole. We'll probably within a month or two have this, all the manholes assessed in terms of the condition, we'll be able to start mapping that out so you can visually see it, either this fall or winter. That's the manhole side. On the pipe side, we're going to have plumbers coming in, I think they're supposed to be here this week or next week, and they're going to start ramping up on cleaning sewers and then televising. And so over the course of this fall, they'll be doing a lot of that work. We anticipate about 21 miles of the sanitary sewer and about eight miles of storm sewer will be televised this fall. And then that information from the manholes and televising can be all pulled together GIS first and mapped. Just like the manholes, there's a standard rating system. We'll do the, we'll do the same thing with the pipes, so we can rate all the pipes. This would just be a typical map showing the structural condition of a sanitary sewer system, it's a different community, but it gives you an idea of just how to do, especially you can see the good and bad portions of your, of your system, and that's what we're working for once we get all the televising data and the manhole data. On a more micro level, the information we get from the contractor, every time there's a pipe connected, a crack, a root, they literally, they literally mark it, and we can map that out, and so we And so we will know, every one of these old numbers with letters on there represents something. It's a leak in the pipe, a crack, a pipe coming in. And so at a pretty, um, pretty high level, we know where these defects are. The same thing is required for water, on the water distribution side, they don't, they don't have, there's no grant to do the work, so we're kind of picking away at it, um, as we can for the city, but it is gonna be required under permits to have asset management for water. So we did the same thing, we've extracted data out of our, on the mobile mapping, and you can see the numbers there for the valves and hydrants. Um, and the water surfaces, uh, the ones we picked up, the curb stops we picked up, the ones we can see or that were marked on the, on the curbs, um, there will be many more of those, because we can't see all of them. And, uh, the beauty is though, with an iPad and, um, a little piece of software, we'll be able to locate those, a Bruce or one of Jeff's guys can go out, sit over a curb stop and, and hit a button and basically log it into the system, and so we can continue to populate that portion. Then from there, we'll do GIS mapping, condition assessment levels, other things that we did for the water sewer. Um, just the water, water GIS map is taken from the model that was prepared by Abby Marsh. What you don't see is all the detail of every valve we shot, so all these pipes gotta be moved around to be actually in their survey location. Now they're more of a concept as to where they are. Our intention is they will be, uh, fairly accurate to survey grade in terms of going through the valves and their locations. We've talked in the past, water flow metering, we're doing it out of the districts, that continues, but now we're down to three meters. Um, CSO flow monitoring at CSO 18 continues. So far, we've recorded 14 events, they've ranged between 0.2 and 12.4 million gallons. I've seen these maps before as well. Um, what we've identified, at least at this point, is the southeast portion of the city appears to have the higher rates of infiltration and inflow. And, um, as we get into televising, cleaning, and starting to try and chase down INI, that'll be where we target our efforts. That was the intent of doing that a year ago, so we're a little more focused in our We just recently received a draft, uh, permit schedule, not the full draft permit, but the schedule, uh, from the DEQ, and we're working on setting up a meeting with them to start discussing that draft language. So we'll be right in the middle of this NPDS renewal, uh, negotiation. And, um, part of the language requires what's called a wet weather corrective action program, or a CAP, and that's one of the first things we'll be working towards, um, preparing. And that essentially outlines the roadmap for reducing INI, storing INI, and getting rid of CSO 18. So that's, um, that's spelled out in the draft, and, uh, as, and over the next couple months, we're gonna learn more. We're also looking at funding sources, we've talked to NRCS Rural Development, we're in, um, and we'll probably be coming to council sometime in September or October to, um, look for authorization to proceed with an application, uh, to that extent. So that, that is on the lines of NPDS permit renewal. Switching gears, uh, to streets. Last year, we, uh, working with Elmers, we did about 1.6 miles of milling fill work and a little bit of curb work, um, that was completed in fall last year. We have, uh, I just talked with Ruth Riley today, and they are, um, looking at the end of August to be coming out and doing the milling fill work this year, that negotiated, um, agreement between Ruth Riley and the city for about roughly $140,000 worth of work. And they don't anticipate it taking too long to do it. Uh, it might be, it mentioned three days, so it may be around a week to get, you know, worst case, to get that work done if it goes according to their plan. Um, so that's within a couple of weeks is when we were hoping to have them in town. And, um, Jeff talked about preventive maintenance was on the agenda tonight, so, uh, ideally, they could start up in the fall if they had an opening like Jeff mentioned, maybe doing crack sealing, but it's probably a little more realistic that we'd see them in town next spring. Just some photos from last year's 2015 street improvements, just a couple of them, the milling fill work. Um, 20, this, this year's project with Ruth Riley, those are, uh, the locations kinda scattered around. The micro cer, surface work, that is the, um, close locations there. Um, and it's worth just men, mentioning again, it's a, it's a preventive maintenance treatment method, uh, intended for middle-aged type roads that are kinda getting down to just normal crack sealing. And so it's, um, MDF's got it listed as seven to 10 years of, uh, pavement life extension, I've seen five years. So we're looking at five to 10 years of pavement life extension based on, um, that treatment, but it needs to be done at a certain time in the pavement's life, uh, cycle, so. And that's where these streets are at for that work, for that maintenance. 12th Street, obviously been a lot of discussion on that, I guess just looking from the engineering side of this. Um, there was a, the presentation to council in May, uh, discussion on, um, a couple of options. Um, we were directed to look at the two-way option, and we bid a project, uh, that accommodated that in May, um, and of course, the, the legal process is ongoing, and so, um, we've been just on hold from an engineering standpoint. If, depending on how that shakes out, there is the possibility if the work started early in September, you could do it this year, but if it gets to be any later in September, uh, the plants close in early November for pavement, and you'd be really pressing. And I think the contractor told us it was about a six-week project, was at least how they approached the project, so. We did a bridge inspection last year, we're updating the city's file on that. Uh, the transportation improvement plan, uh, started with the, um, ad hoc street committee is kinda where this all started. It's, uh, we've been using it every year, it's a five-year rolling plan in essence. Um, we look at it with city staff in fall, winter, once we kind of know everything that's getting constructed this year, uh, we can, um, we look at PISA ratings, roadsoft data, each individual segment with prior cost estimates, and we kind of work through, we look at it, um, all the utility projects, which we're getting to the point now where we're running out of places to go, because there's a lot of potential utility projects coming down the road later, um, that we wanna, obviously, combine with a road project. So, um, this, so this fall or winter, we'll be adding streets, uh, we'll be obviously adding the 2021 list of streets, uh, to the tip. But there's also, because of, um, the work, uh, we had negotiated with Ruth Riley, we actually got a little bit more work than we planned, and so we have some additional milling fill that'll be added in 2017. So we'll be going through that process in the fall and winter. And again, um, those later projects are gonna most likely start getting into some of the utility work, because I think that works out better in the budgeting for the utility type projects. This is just a picture of last year's tip, um, it's already changed a little bit, because we got more on Ruth Riley's project, and it'll, it'll be updated this fall and winter. Switching gears again, um, the Riverwalk repair, uh, that kind of snuck up on us last year, there was, there's, these are pictures, obviously, of the previous condition. Uh, this, this lower picture on the right shows the undercutting, where this two-by-sixes is basically where the sidewalk is. And so this little gap here is under the sidewalk, um, that's how it looked, uh, last year. And timing-wise, we were pretty lucky, because above, the one, the day the contractor showed up, this literally was failing, and it fell in the second day the contractor was onsite. So that was just lucky timing. Proposed, we looked at two options, if you recall, last year, one was to do steel sheeting along the entire thing, was kind of the option one, but it was a lot more expensive, I think it was $70,000 more. And so this option was selected to use, um, to basically rebuild the embankment and protect it with stone, and, uh, that is all in place, and, uh, so far so good. We've done very little work with the parks, but a little bit of support, um, little CAD drafting, um, on Morton Park for, um, Parks Commission and Jeff's people working on it. Fifth Avenue Beach, years ago, we did a concept plan, and we've been just doing mostly staking and assisting with, um, layout, uh, as the city's been working on the project out there. Uh, last item that we've been involved with is the Short Street retaining wall. You may have noticed the piles of blocks everywhere, uh, next to Edgewater. Uh, this, this wall will be going in on the west side of Edgewater, and, uh, it's gonna provide some parking area for the Edgewater development, but it really is there to support Short Street. And that's probably two to four weeks, I'm guessing, um, for startup on that. Uh, this, this picture just shows an example of one, it's not obviously the wall we have, but, um, there will be railing on it and, um, and it's significant, one area is pushing 20 foot tall. Um, so it's a significant wall that'll be going in, uh, later this summer. We've done other work for the city through the last year's survey work and just general consulting, as needed answering questions. That's kind of it with the projects, just, you know, looking ahead, future priorities. Um, this is very similar, I think, to last year, and is probably, at least my mind, a theme I hear over and over is, you know, the, the streets still are very important items to continue to work towards, and I feel it's our responsibility to cost-effectively, you know, try and manage those dollars and get the biggest bang for the buck. Um, so that's a priority. I think getting the city's utilities, um, inventory and condition assessment done on them, just like we've done on the roads for 10, 12 years here, you need to get to that level with all the utilities, so you can be in that same asset management planning mode with water, sewer, and storm, especially because you can't see it. Um, streets are pretty easy. And then finally, with the NPDS renewal, the CSO issue, um, I, heavy INI, we think, you know, that continues to be one of the high priorities. So those are kind of the top three that I've seen, but, um, obviously, per direction of council or staff, we can work on anything that we're directed to do. With that, um, open up for questions or discussion?
Sean, uh, you mentioned, um, the sewer lines, um, running the camera down and cleaning the lines. Will that cause any issues with businesses and residents when, when those lines are cleaned?
It shouldn't. Um, they, uh, they'll be flushing, so they'll work from the top of a, a system, so they'll go into a tributary and they'll work from the top and they'll work their way down and flushing it downstream. Um, I have not seen many problems, we do it, it's done all the time, and so we haven't seen many problems. There probably is a rare case if something plugs downstream and you put a little extra water in the system, that, I guess there's always the possibility, because you're, but it's not typical to have issues and, and have to notify people that we're doing it.
What would that cost, backed up in somebody's house?
If, if there was a blockage and they continued, um, there's a lot of water coming down, and you surcharge the manhole, you surcharge the system, I suppose it could, that would be a worst-case scenario. I haven't seen, I personally haven't seen very much of that. I actually see more problems when we do smoke testing and we hit smoke in a home or something like that. But it's, it's a possibility, I won't throw it out.
Thank you. In reference to the CSO 18, you, we talked about, you were, you had a meeting with DEQ about possibly a retention pond, um, not to the scale that they would like us to have. Is there been any movement on that at all, have they?
I think so, our last meeting with the, the MDQ opened up some of those possibilities of, call it a hybrid, of a smaller pond that doesn't meet their standard. And their standard, to put it in reference, is a 25-year, 24-hour storm, it's 3.9 inches of rain. And based on what we've been monitoring so far in the city, that's equivalent to storing about 20-plus million gallons of water. And so if they just said today, you need to design something to get rid of CSO 18, do nothing else, no INI reduction, nothing else, you'd have to build a 20-million-gallon tank, which is not, it's just not even practical. It couldn't be done, let alone the cost of it. So we, we proposed to them some hybrid alternative of putting in a, uh, storage basin that could store, a wind store, that storm, but let's say it could store half of the events we've seen at the CSO. So instead of 14, there would just have been six or seven. And doesn't meet the standard, but we've got a plan to continue to look for INI, a parallel plan. And as we find INI, the, what we call the level of service or the function of that basin is better and better with time, because now you have less INI, now it can, instead of a five-year return storm, maybe it's a 10-year, 15, eventually we'll get to this 25-year if you're doing kind of both together. And a, a basin could be modular, there's a lot of ways to approach it, and that's the kind of things we're gonna be talking about with them, is this cap, there's some cap, there's some plan, program, we'll lay some of that out. And it's a very, you know, critical discussions on how it.
How far in the future you anticipate something happening with CSO?
Well, it's gonna be very quick. The DEQ wants, you know, within four years to have, um, implementation of the plan to get rid of CSO 18. And so what that looks like is probably what needs to be negotiated, but I don't think there will be much discussion on, uh, CSO 18 being around in four years. There's gonna be, through another basin, you know, a basin and INI reduction, there's, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get to the removal of CSO 18. It's a question of, do we meet a 25-year, 24-hour design at that four-year period? Because the thing that's hard is we have to, to get rid of the inflow isn't too hard, too hard if you know where it is and what it is. You can design a project, you know, move the water where it's supposed to be, but we have no idea what it is, where it's coming from, what it looks like. Is it all footing drains? Is it storm sewer connections? Roof drains, all these different things, uh, we have to find them, I mean, televise for a year to find them, figure them out, walk in the field, smoke test, dye test, talk to the owners, uh, and then we can do a plan, and that might be just one or two of them, there's probably 20 or 30 scattered around the city. And now, it just, it's a timing issue, and that's what we're gonna talk to the DEQ about is, it's just, it's hard to get to that, oh, INI elimination in four, four years. So putting a basin to, you know, as a starting point is an option. All needs to be discussed.
The four meters you put in, you have it all over town, that pretty much tells you where you need to start televising, right? Is that what I heard you say?
It does, and, and, or, yeah, anything televising, cleaning, that's just, we know we're gonna focus in that area, because per that map, you know, that's focus area. Now, the other three meters we have that should still be around, we may go inside of that district and try and break that up some more. And so we know we're within that little pocket, we're to keep looking, um, so between televising, maybe some more flow monitoring next year, we might isolate those areas even smaller than that district that we have there.
One last question, you say four years, what happens at the end of four years we haven't shut down CSO 18?
I can't, that's a tough question, because that's probably what we really gotta talk to the DEQ about. There is, there's, um, yeah, there's compliance issues, there's a lot of ways they can approach that, and I can't come close to speculating on what that would be.
It could be finesse involved, it could be all kinds of things.
There could be, anyone say that's not a question? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sean. The next one here from Ms. Tamara Bruswinski, who requires activities at the Alliance for Good evening. Sean, I'm just very impressed, I just, I have to say that was really impressive. Um, but I am here to impress you on what the Alliance for Economic Success has been doing, and so I'm really happy to, to be here. My name is Tamara, this weekend, the Community Development Director. Um, as you know, the AES has three missions, so we call ourselves the Three Pillars. Uh, Community Development, which I am in charge of, Resource Development, Tim Urban is in charge of that, and Business Development, Business and Job Development, which Betsy Evans handles. And together, those are our three charges that we, um, are committed to for the City of Manistee. Just to give you a little idea, um, Community Development is really, um, works hand-in-hand with planning, it's very much a, uh, looks at the community as a whole to really understand priorities, um, to work with residents, to engage them, and to excite them about their community, and to find out what their priorities are, and then to communicate those. Um, and usually, we try to do that through, um, the, the identification of priorities. Um, very much a bottoms-up process, uh, number one says Tamara sat in a room and came up with priorities for any community, it's always an expression of the community themselves. I take those priorities and working with Resource Development, Business and Job Development, and we put our thinking caps on on how to implement, or how to make happen, how to achieve, um, success on those priorities. Betsy focuses on Business and Job Development, which is exactly what it sounds like. She works hand-in-hand with businesses throughout the city and throughout the county to, um, make sure that there, our entrepreneurs are, uh, supported, um, the existing businesses have what they need, and that we're always looking for new opportunities to fill those vacant storefronts and properties. Uh, what's really interesting and more elusive in some respects is when we What's really interesting and more elusive in some respects is when we work with resource development, when we work with Tim, to really look for the money or the grants or the education to make a lot of the work that needs to happen actually happen. You know, it's really easy to monitor the money that comes in, which is in the millions of dollars, but what isn't so easy to touch and feel and see, and maybe even hear about, is the leveraging that he's able to do through the contacts and the relationships that he builds with philanthropy, with the state, and even the federal government, to really bring a spotlight on the City of Manistee so that when there is a project that needs to be done and it's important to get done, then we have the attention of our state leaders and even federal leaders to make things happen. So that's a little bit, our three pillars. And so within that, one of the things that we do, obviously, is work with the city on their strategic plan every year. We've been doing that for quite some time, and this year was no exception. And at the beginning of the year, we worked on that, and then through that process, AES, you gave us our work plan, what we needed to focus on in the year 2016. And so we've been working diligently on that, basically talking about, and I think you guys have the handout that I gave you, but this is no surprise to you, really talking about common economic development processes and plans and strategies that can help lay the foundation for a lot of work that needs to be done this year, next year, and in the future. Focusing on the industrial park, infrastructure development and property acquisition, looking at the rail relocation, engaging in and facilitating community-wide discussions about all manner of issues that have bubbled up over the course of the year or years or in the future, to make sure we've got good communication between all the communities that surround the city or that involves the city. Housing strategy, really look at our housing needs and issues, to focus on our vacant properties and to find opportunities for taking care of those vacant properties, linking training and jobs and workforce development. Also, all manner of recreation and near to dear to my heart is implementing the recreation plan that just came through. And I suspect through the new master plan too, there probably will be a number of efforts there that will bubble up that will fit under that strategy. And then also helping out with the combined sewer overflow issue. So specifically, when we talk about business development, who have been, we, I'm going to, you know, get names, we don't usually get names because there's a lot of confidentiality in working with businesses, they don't always like to have things broadcast, but, you know, probably we've been working with the Fillmore to help them get started, a number of permits, another, a number of issues that really came down to the final line that we were able to help them get through so they could open that door. Working with potential interest in the city drugstore, the boathouse restaurant, bringing in MEDC. As a matter of fact, they were here today, and Betsy was walking through, that's the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, obviously an important funder of a lot of projects here in the city, walking up and down the city main street, looking at some of those projects. When we talk about downtown housing and also vacant property, they were looking at the Glitz Building, which, you know, just recently, we had a potential housing developer, and maybe even a mixed-use type project in the Glitz Building. We were able to convene funders, Venture North from Traverse City, and then a group out of Chicago, the developer, myself, that, Denise, we all met to look at the Glitz, you know, inching closer to having something done with the Glitz Building. And then trying to pull in other resources to help create that package. It's very complicated to get these kind of projects off and running. In addition, looking at the Olsen's Grocery Store and that entire complex to look to see how that can be adaptively reused. I don't know if you've heard any kind of rumors about potential uses for it, but really working with area city and county organizations that may utilize that building and some of the retail over there as well. So those are some recent, last month or two focused projects that we've been a part of. And, you know, they fit in quite well with your goals and strategies, so we're not mission drifting there. The industrial park, we're working on targeting, identifying a target manufacturing for the industrial park. That is being done actively through our manufacturing strategy, and we have a consultant working fast and furious on doing that. And we're excited to see the results of that work sometime at the end of the year, but really to link the most appropriate type of uses for the industrial park. And then per your direction, if, really, if all else failed, what else can be done at that industrial park? So those are all the things in our thinking about it. But along those lines, we are beginning the development of an industrial park database so that database will be used to help link uses. And I don't know if you've ever seen, MEDC is, and other places are always listing potential projects, potential entrepreneurs that are always looking for properties. It would be great if we had that database, because then we can immediately start linking people with property. So we're working on that. We're also to help our entrepreneurs in the community and far and wide develop a service hub for them. And we're doing work on understanding best practice, leading practice on what those types of hubs look like. We certainly get enough calls, and it's exciting to talk to an entrepreneur who is excited about the city, because they see all the wonderful things that are happening, and they see all the potential. And they, I know they feel just like I did when I came here 12 years ago, what a great place this is. So we continue to try to figure out how to best serve those entrepreneurs so that they can actually launch their business here. Within my realm, you know, we've been looking at the rail relocation issue, traveling far and wide to reconnect with the original engineering firm that did the original studies to understand what next steps might be, but that would open up 7.5 miles of property for use. So just, I don't know, you know, it's no longer Marquette Rail, it's Genesee and Wyoming, and so new cast of characters, not necessarily an old idea, obviously, the engineering study's still good, so we don't have to spend any money on that, but we just, we're opening up those possibilities. More to come on that. The US 31 Corridor Plan, that is a corridor plan that obviously includes the city, but it's county-led road south to north, and Rob Carson and I are actually doing that in-house. And it's to look at, you know, we actually secured a grant for $35,000. There's also InKind, which is Rob in my book. The project is going to be done in February 2017. We've already conducted the public input for the city, we've already done enormous amount of data collection, and actually, to my utter delight, tomorrow, we're going to start analyzing that data, and as a planner, that's just like candy in a candy store. So I'm really excited to see some of the trends and some of the opportunities that are out there, just from all that we've already learned. So more to come on that. But hopefully, what, you know, the end result of that will be, so when people enter and exit the community, they know they've landed here. Their first impression is wow, and I want to stay, for all manner of reasons. And sometimes, our first face, our first look is what will capture somebody. And, you know, that can be done through a lot of different types of techniques, streetscapes, signage, all manner of things. So, you know, that's what the corridor plan will be addressing, and it was fun to listen to the public, to hear them notice a lot of things that we've already noticed, and to bring up a lot of other nice ideas. So I always get excited when I hear people bring ideas to the table, and they're always are there. We started with the, to work with The Fog on their first-ever strategic plan, and that's coming along nicely. You've already heard about the Resource Recovery Grant and, from Allen, and I know Sarah was here, and did you, I know you saw her. She's fantastic, and I know she's going to do a great job for us. We were asked by the University of Michigan if we wanted to participate with a new program that they've got. It's called Michigan Engaging Community Through the Classroom Initiative. It's a mouthful, I can't always remember it, but it's M E C C. And this is really, really exciting, and this is very new within the last month. They actually, Networks Northwest suggested the City of Manistee because they know that I have been, we have been struggling with our housing, and what do we need to do about housing? We know there's an issue. And so we are appealing ourselves to students, graduate students, master students, PhD students, their professors, their department heads, the vice president, the provost, whomever and whoever we need to help us solve problems here in Manistee County, and we're focusing on the city first. I'm really excited about it because it's not just planners, it's attorneys, it's from the Ross Business School, it's from the College of Engineering. These are the best and the brightest who are going to come to Manistee and who are going to help us look at issues. So we're starting with housing, if they like us. Then I can start telling them about a lot more other stuff that I think we need to focus on that are going to come from, you know, your guys' priorities. And that, to me, is really exciting, because not only do we give back to students, but then we get a lot of great work out of it, and we're always looking for capacity. You know, we need more people to solve our problems, bright people. We use MSU extensions all the time, so now we're in, and Baker College, so now we're engaging in another university, and it's my alma mater, so I'm excited about that. So we're actually looking at brownfield sites for the project. It will be a residential project, they're going to package it, and it will be ready for a developer to look at for potentially doing a project there. So I'll be telling you more about that in December, because the project should be done by then. And it will be fun to see what their idea of a packaged project is. I was working with T, that, Denise, to look at various sites. It's up to the, you know, the project to pick a site, but it's the typical ones that you probably think of, and a few other ones that aren't so typical. So I'm excited about that. Resource development, this is that kind of elusive one, but, you know, basically, continuing to have discussions with all the key stakeholders throughout the state, you know, the obvious ones, like the US Department of Ag, Rural Development, the Natural Resources Land Trust Fund, who was here this summer, and I know some of you were at the beach at the dedication. That was really exciting, it was their 40th year anniversary, and they came here to celebrate. I think that says a lot about the city. We've also entered in with a new relationship with the North Trust Bank of Chicago, interested in the area, so that's another potential funder. But Tim is always making new contacts and strengthening the ones that he already has. And the reason, obviously, is so that we can always leverage what we have and to create more opportunities. When the North Trust Bank of Chicago came, they're the ones who came to look at the Glitz Building. It was just fun to watch her look at the Riverwalk and to look down towards Lake Michigan, and I know she wanted to put on a swimsuit and go swimming, we know the water's warm. So it was, it was nice. You know, we, the City of Manistee is an important fishing hub, so we all know that Tim is an avid fisherman. He has been asked to lend his insight on, you know, the state of the fishery in Lake Michigan and throughout the state in general, which puts a spotlight on our very important economic generator for the city, commercial fishery. So that's great that he, you know, and I just, I'm having a hard time really communicating the importance of that, but when you go to these meetings and you have these folks, and Tim is able to say, "Well, in the City of Manistee, in the City of Manistee," and he's talking about these issues that are statewide and under the spotlight, it gets our name out there in a way that most communities don't have the privilege of having done. So that's why it's included here, just so you know that we're getting that kind of recognition and that type of, well, it's just kudos to us, I think, to the city. Looking at, obviously, working on that recreation plan and the Exfoli Shores Project, which continues to get statewide and national recognition, to get a new site into the city, and I believe it's the Ninth Street Boat Launch. Tim went to, Tim was asked by the US Senator Debbie Savna to come to Washington D.C. to report on the state of community economic development, and Manistee was highlighted at the federal level. And just to try to bring it to home, whenever we work on regional initiatives like Lakes to Land or the Stronger Economies Together program set, every time we put in a grant and we're able to say, "City of Manistee participates in these regional initiatives," it's amazing, because collaboration and regionalism is so important at the state level and the national level. Our projects go from maybe further down, they elevate them immediately to the top. And it's because we continue to work collaboratively with our neighbors, and that even includes Benzé County, and then within our county. And we struggle, and we do these Lakes to Land, and we do these set programs, and they're great and they're worthwhile, and you hope something will come out of it that's really fantastic. But just from a grant and a resource development perspective, it just elevates our stature. So that is what we have been up to and what we will continue to be up to unless you give us different directions. We'd like to have fun, and we'd like to have visitors, so come down anytime and visit. I look forward to updating the strategic plan with you. We had always kind of kibbitz about doing it maybe in the fall, sometime less than closer to the budget season, so, you know, keep that in mind if you wanted to reopen that after the elections. I am available, I'm ready and willing. Thank you very much. If you have any questions.
DEQ, I have one quick question. I think one of the things that AES in the new Alliance with Betsy County has identified is the lack of high-speed internet throughout the rural areas of our county. Can you have any insight, do you have any updates you can share on that?
Yes, thank you for that, because actually, I've been working on the broadband initiative, and I am really very concerned about the interior communities. But also, we can't forget, even though within the city, you can hook up just fine, you can get your internet, and you can get your Netflix and all of that. What's happening in the industry is that that bandwidth, it needs to get wider, because what's happening is they're transmitting data faster, and you need more and different, and the technology is changing. So even though we may think we already have it, it needs to be improved upon what we already have, and then the areas in the county that don't have it. And I mean, that includes Benzé County. We need to bring it to them. It's obviously a very important social and economic factor, and actually, for education too, when we think about our schools that are moving more towards, and have already moved towards, you know, online educational resources. So we have until September 14th to complete surveys. These surveys are so important, today I was a little disheartened, after two months, we only have 260 people who have responded to the survey. This survey is going to show the demand, so we need to show the demand to show the providers that we want it, that we need it. It's just common sense. So I just need all 25,000 people here in Manistee County to fill out one of those surveys, and I need every single business, school, all the libraries, every nonprofit to fill out that survey, so we can show in a powerful voice that we need improved broadband. So I just posted today on Facebook the link. I know it's really ironic, I'm asking people who don't have internet to take an online survey, I know. It's dumb, come to my office, use my computer, you can use your smartphone to take it, borrow your friends, go to the library, I have paper copies. It's almost desperate. I was actually thinking of sending my teenage son around to, I don't know what I was thinking of doing, having him stand in a corner and hand out those surveys. I'm just, I'm just like, I need people to take the survey. Yeah, I don't know if that answers your question, but we're working on it actually desperately.
Well, you know, and I just, my other world is a realtor, and I'm finding more and more people who want to live on 10 acres out of Manistee County who don't have high-speed internet service.
Yeah.
So it's, people are getting more and more with their jobs, and they do that.
Yeah, I know of two businesses that wanted to move in, and some of these were home-based, which is fine. An attorney and then, at any rate, couldn't, because where they live, they don't have, they have internet, but it's not what they need it to be. they have internet, but it's not what they need it to be because their job is now requiring the better service. You know, and if you're a gamer and you've got teenagers that they know all about, it's like, oh yeah, the dumb things buffering all the time, if you want Netflix, every time it buffers, it's not because of your router, it's because there's too many people using the system and our system isn't, can't handle it. So yeah, I'm working on it. Anything else?
Are you working with the Rams, the New Rams level board at all or is there any?
I am not. I am not, and I'm sorry, I can't answer questions on that. But I'd be happy to find out any answers to any questions you might have. Thank you, Tim. Thank you so much.
Thanks, we'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizen attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Anyone who'd like to comment? Can you state your name and address?
I'm Ryan Kieskowski, 618 Pine Street. I'd just like to bring up the 12th Street issue again. And a couple of things, I happen to be looking at the 2017 through 2021 budget and in year, fiscal year 2018, you guys are planning on redoing 12th Street from Maple to US 31 to bring that one up to Act 51 standard. And in 2019, we're looking at doing Oak Street to Elm Street. So you've already got two people that are not happy with you because of 12th Street from Maple to Oak. And you're probably going to have a lot of people that aren't happy with you with 12th Street from Maple to US 31. So I think you guys need to have some more conversation about 12th Street and bring everybody together before we start putting in sidewalks, widening the road and everything else like that. There's no sense to have two people, you know, disappointed in the city right now and then two years later, we've got another handful of people that are unhappy with you. And I will also bring up, I'm glad Mr. Middleton was here tonight because it's probably just right up the city's alley that you guys started a six-week project on 12th Street when school's about to start here in three weeks. So with what he had said, that's a six-week project, I don't think there's any reason you should start it right now because we've got school starting, we have football games that are going to be there. Where's all that traffic going to go? How are you going to get to the school if they're down there working on that section of road? How are you going to get to the football games? How are we going to get to volleyball games? How are you going to get to swim meets? So I think there's a lot more discussion that needs to go into this project. And the reason being is that you've already got projects coming up in 2018 and 2019 that are tied right to 12th Street. So again, I'm opposed to what you're doing right now. I think there needs to be further communication. And I also think that this project needs to be put on hold until after the election. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come forward and speak.
Thank you. Does anyone else who'd like to comment?
Hi, I'm Dan Meesner, 165 Arthur Street. For those of you that don't know where that is, that's Jocelyn Cove. So I wanted to come and express my appreciation to the council for approving the Jocelyn Cove Brownfield redevelopment project. I appreciate that. I bought a condo there eight years ago. I was the first person to buy there. We made our almost quarter of a million dollar investment in Manistee at that time. And we're really happy to see that that project is going to go forward now and help ensure the security of the investment that we made. So we appreciate that. I think it's good for the community as well. Thank you for that. And if I might just make one comment on the 12th Street. Just looking at it from an engineering standpoint and a practical application standpoint, I believe that the proposed two-way activity that you have planned there, two-way street, especially with the proximity of the school, makes the most sense. I think from an engineering standpoint, I strongly support what you're planning to do there.
Thank you. Does anyone else who'd like to comment?
My name is Carol Pascal and I live at 610 Spruce Street. My first comment is just, I was kind of disappointed in the manner in which you handled the appointment. In 15 years that I've attended city council meetings, I've sat in on interviews where the seat was filled and I have never seen it done in the way in which you did it tonight, where it was not opened up to the 7th District to say you were going to do this, that you were going to make an appointment. And this has no reflection on you, I don't know at all. It doesn't reflect at all, I'm not there. But it's just the process. It's the way, as I said, 15 years, I've never seen it done in this manner. And I think it was wrong to do it that way. You could have simply had it put in the paper, waited, I mean, there's no emergency that it has to be done tonight. Could have been put in the paper, opened up for anyone who wanted to apply for that position. Has nothing to do with the election. It's applying for an open seat right now. Do it the way it's been done. Give the 7th District a voice. You took their voice away by deciding tonight that you were going to do it this way. And I was disappointed in that. Now, on a more positive note, the other night, I was early, a couple of weeks ago, I met a man in a parking lot. I mean, we just saw each other and started to talk a little bit. And he was from Milwaukee and he said he was staying at our marina. And he couldn't stop talking about how wonderful the marina was, how much he loved the facility, how good the people were there, how much he loved Manistee, and how this is his favorite place down the whole west coast of Michigan. This is his favorite place to come and bring his big sailboat. So I just like, you should know that about the marina. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else who'd like to comment?
Kerry Katolski, 159 Quincy Street. Couple of things here, I went to Wheezy's and it's my understanding they do the baskets for the city. And I worked out a price for another 20 to 25 hanging baskets. And my wife and I will be willing to purchase those baskets and have them filled for the next five years. If we could kind of find a place for long US 31 to hang them, especially on the north side. If that doesn't work out, then maybe some planters or whatever, you pull it, okay? So I'll throw that out and I'll let the council get back to me on that. On the second topic, I want to give you guys this. Let me take one pass, please. Thank you. A new council member? Why, welcome aboard. I thank the council for doing the right thing and picking a new council member. It's time we break away from what we've done in the past and have changed in the city. What I handed you, and I'll show the audience here, is the condition of the street that has been ignored for about 70 years in the City of Manistee. That's the condition. About 1,200 feet long and pretty much the whole thing is hiles. It is so bad, sand is coming through and washing into driveways. Okay? Show that so you can put it on video, please. I sent you, gave you a package there. It's been about 70 years since this road has been paved. My parents built a house there in 1936, it was paved, I think, mid-1940s. So therefore it's probably 71 years old. It's got drainage issues, it's potlows infested, sand is coming up from the foundation of the road. I have asked for 12 years, when is this road going to get fixed? I have never received a response. I've asked what decade will it get fixed, have not received a response. Okay? So I bring this up again because we have, you know, four fairly new council members. And I think this issue needs to be addressed. It's still not in the plan all the way through 2021. It's my understanding it has to be connected with utility works. We've heard that that is going to be concentrated on in the near future. I would expect this street to be one of those to be discussed. First, the first package, first picture of the package I gave you is Quincy Street. The second one is another section of Quincy Street. The third one is what the drainage is bringing into driveway, sand, et cetera, from the road when it rains because the drainage system presently is the sidewalk. The next one is a picture of Cleveland Street from Maple Street to Quincy Street. The whole thing basically is nothing but potlows. And then the last one is a picture of what I found in the city of Sheboygan a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. Almost every road in that city is that, is in that condition. I believe that is the process of putting stones down and et cetera. It is beautiful. Hard for us to find any potlows in that city. I'm not sure what life is, but you can't tell me there's something that can be, do not be done better to redress this problem until the sewer is fixed or linked the utility project to the street here. This is unbelievable. How do you expect this road to last another seven, eight, nine years until you think you're going to get it under plan? Thank you.
Does anyone else who'd like to comment? Do you want to move on to officials and staff? Say, Kirk? Any answer?
Nothing.
Zoning and planning? Public safety director?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Very quickly, the new signs at the recycling center were installed today.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff. Quick question. On the by the FOG theater where it was opened up for sewer repair, is that going to be repaired?
I politely issued an ultimatum to the contractor and to the vote management that if they do not get it paved very quickly, then I will contract to have it done.
So we're looking at a couple of weeks or?
I would say within the next two weeks, it'll be paved.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Bead?
Speaking of signs, I have a question. I have asked this just within the last week, I know it hasn't been a lot of time, but I would really like to see some signs on Fifth Avenue Beach House with a concession stand is on the outside of the buildings that says, "No dogs allowed." Because I've been down there a number of times. I love dogs, I have a dog, I know I'm not supposed to bring a dog on the beach, but the signage is very good down there. And the food vendor in there, he's been really, you know, he's been really cool about it, but he's having to tell people who are bringing their dogs up there that there's no dogs allowed. So I think it would be really helpful if those signs were on the outside, both sides of the building, so people can see them and they're visible. So I would just like a little more signage because we've talked about signage a lot tonight and throwing that out there. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Swanson? Councilmember Good speak.
Erin, I'm going to shake your hand in a little bit. Welcome. Again, this process, I'm not opposed to coming, I'm glad to see you come. The reason why I voted was because of how we did things in the past. That was all my reason why. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Witten?
I just want to thank you, Bocken, for taking care of the blade issue that we spoke about earlier today. So thank you.
We're starting that painting here.
Well, it's in process, so.
To want to welcome Erin aboard, you'll find that staff would be great to get you acclimated and up to speed and answer any questions. We have a great staff. So we're through that and he'll be happy to get you up to speed on everything. And as we end the, end of the summer, just be mindful of our students. There are some schools that are going back before Labor Day, so just be careful and watch out for those kids. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Thank you.
May you adjourn.